Yeah.
All right. A call to order, the special board meeting and potential executive session for Wednesday, February 5th, 2025. We are in the Board of Supervisors Executive Conference Room pursuant to ARS 38431.02H. The public will have physical access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to start. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. Members of the Cochise County Board of Supervisors will intend either in person or by telephone, video, or internet conferencing pursuant to ARS 38431.03B. Minutes in discussion in the executive session shall be kept confidential. We'll start off with a rule call of the board. District one.
Crosby is here.
District two.
Gomez is here.
And district three, Antonori is here. All members of the board are present and in person. All right, action first. Guess I will entertain a motion to discuss agenda item number one.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move into executive session under ARS 38431.03 subsection eight, three, and four to discuss potential or future litigation include involving the county and the Board of Supervisors. Evaluate any potential conflicts of interest involving the county attorney's office and consider the retention of outside counsel to provide legal advice in cases where a conflict of interest or disharmony with the county attorney may, the county attorney's office may exist.
May, is the one I can ask a question?
You can second it and then we'll discussion.
Second.
Okay, now discussion, there we go.
Why are we going into executive session on this issue? Why can't we be transparent and open to the public on why we're doing this since in my regards, I feel like I'm gagged and my hands are tied because I can't talk to these gentlemen about anything that, but the sheriff has been able to do all kinds of things in giving disinformation about how we stand. So maybe the best thing is to be open and transparent with the public so they know where we're coming from, since we do not have that kind of ability to go to the press, to go to different Republican meetings and discuss the issue, to go to the mayor's and tell them, you know, the Board of Supervisors is such so bad because.
You're saying you're hamstrung by the discussion that occurred in executive session?
Well, I think everything after that, I'm, I'm, it's, they make it impossible for me to talk to these gentlemen about the fact of, especially with the letter that you sent me. You know, there were things that you implied in there that didn't happen, but yet I'm constrained.
Wait a second. You can vote no about going into executive session. That's okay. And so there is a motion, it needs to be seconded and then we can vote on it.
Okay.
All right, I mean, it's an option. So what I would say is some of the things we discussed is also legal, legal strategy and you want to keep that between you and your attorney and you don't want.
Which attorney are we talking about?
Whoever that attorney may be, right now it's Mr. Kreia, right? But I mean, if, if we have other discussions that are with our attorneys, some of those discussions are legal strategy and advice and stuff that.
Can you, when you figure those are legal strategy, can you then go into executive session?
Sure, you can do it anytime. Just like it says on our, our agenda, it says, it says, we may go into executive session, blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
Are you familiar with that, usually the heading of, of a, of a meeting?
Okay.
I would also add that, now, there still hasn't been a second, has there?
No, she's not.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay. Attorney client privilege is up to the client.
Which is us.
Which is us.
Okay, it's not up to the attorneys.
Okay.
So if we, if we decide as a board, we don't want to go into executive session, we don't have to.
And.
Now, excuse me.
Yeah.
By the same token, you can't go talk about, if Frank and I, we agree, we go into executive session, then you can't talk about.
Absolutely, I understand that. But not having the ability to speak to you guys beforehand on, you know, what this all means.
That's part of what we're going to talk about today.
Perfectly. And I want the public to understand where I am on this because I do feel like I'm gagged and inability not to talk with the board because we are kind of attacked as a board, but individually, I mean, it, it makes it really difficult to speak to you gentlemen about what I think about all that's happened. So that is what I want the public to understand in case we go into executive session.
Yeah, I had discussions, Ms. Kreia, about my heartburn with the way the open meeting law is being interpreted.
Exactly.
And the intent of the law was to protect, protect the public from having elected bodies conducting business behind closed doors so that, no, it wasn't to basically say that now that I've been friends with you guys and we used to go to dinner together and all of a sudden because we're elected, we can't go to dinner anymore.
Or, or after like the planning and zoning meeting, when you turn to me and say, I'm sorry, I went too long, and I say, that's okay, what we should do. And then someone come up and say, you can't talk.
You can't talk, yeah, yeah. So that's, that's what, we, we discussed that briefly and I, I'm not happy with it. And of course, I, I reached out to our legislators about possibly amending it to a degree, but we all know that there is a fear. When certain elected offices that like to go after people with lawfare and whatnot and then, you know, they find a technicality, oh, we saw the two of you talking in the corner and we think you were talking about this, so we're going to go after you for open meeting law violation.
Right.
So I, I get that.
So I gather that nobody trusts us and that we have the worst intentions because if we can't even, I've been told you are, I'm sure you can even say hello to them. If you walk past them or ask them how the time of day is, then they're, obviously they know they don't trust us. That's what I'm coming to feel. And maybe they're trying to protect us, but these kinds of things, I don't believe in open meetings laws. It keeps you from saying, yeah, this after the policy decision has been made, now I can't say, well, you know, we need to talk about how this came to us and I don't like the way this happened, can we have, you know, I can't even tell you that. That's what I've been made to feel.
Yeah. That's a, that's a good point. That's, that's a whole discussion that we're going to have.
Sure. And I would say, I would welcome like a work session and maybe we could bring Danny Gironi down from the state and, you know, ask him questions, you know, get some guidance on that so that you don't feel like you've got this heavy yoke.
Because I'll go to the next meeting with a gag and tied up public because that's how I feel. They need to understand why I feel that way.
I feel that, yeah.
All right, any other discussion?
Those are.
Any from you guys? All right, well, we have a motion on the floor to go into executive session. I'll call for the vote. District one.
No.
No.
All right, so two to one, we don't go into executive session. So I guess we'll have this discussion in the open.
Should we restate the agenda item number one without the advisory about going into executive session? Well, why not? Why not? Let's just do it. Mr. Chair, I move, we discuss potential or future litigation involving the county and the Board of Supervisors. Evaluate any potential conflict of interest involving the county attorney's office and consider the retention of outside counsel to provide legal advice in cases where a conflict of interest or disharmony with the county attorney's office may exist.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So let's just put it out there then. So a couple of things that, that I wanted to bring up as we seen with the LeChance case, the, the potential conflicts there and whatnot, but this particular meeting, what I wanted to discuss and bring up was the possibility of suing on behalf of the county ASAP and Brian McIntyre, former county attorney, for the damages that occurred regarding the issue with the election and what happened to Mr. Crosby and Ms. Judd. And to cover legal costs associated with that, that were basically denied to them by the insurance company and because Mr. McIntyre violated attorney-client privilege as determined by the Arizona Bar Association and other effects and hire an outside attorney to pursue that case. And that attorney is.
Should I, should I, if, if we're going to talk about that, I will exit.
I think you can sit here and listen if you want.
Okay.
I don't, it's, do you, whether you want to vote, that's a different story.
Nope.
But I think you're able to sit here and listen. You just can't, if you feel conflicted and you want to abstain or step up.
Is that, is that about the only thing that you want to talk about?
No, there's a couple of things, but that's the, that was the, the primary one. So I've, I've established a lot of friendships with a lot of attorneys and folks that know a lot of attorneys. So one, one of the guys I've been talking to is Mick Rusing out of Tucson. And, and Mick believes we have a case and what he would like to do is he would like us to retain him for a short period of time to allow him the opportunity to do the research and make it determine what the viability of that case is. And in order to do that, I would have to declare a conflict or disharmony so that I would be able to hire him as outside counsel.
You don't have to declare a conflict. If you want to use Mick to do this and use outside counsel. So one of the rules that, that county attorney does in the civil section is help you guys find attorneys, fill in attorneys when there's a specialty, you know, that we don't feel like we've got the expertise. You, you're familiar with engagement letters in private practice, always at the bottom it says, I'm not giving you tax advice because personal injury lawyers don't do tax advice, right? So that's a carve out, they recognize the female practice for them to get into a specialty area. Sometimes we just don't have like the horses, the manpower to, to jump at everything that you guys might want to jump at. I worked for Mick, did he tell you that?
No, no, he didn't.
Yeah. I worked at recent.
I didn't mention you, I mentioned Lori's name.
Yeah.
And I told him that it would probably be best for him after we make a decision to give her a call and whatnot, but I didn't, I didn't.
No, I, I have the greatest respect for Mick Rusing and, and his, his law firm.
He, he, he's got a lot of experience in legal malpractice cases, so.
Well, coverage counsel too, because you, you need someone to look at the ASAP policy.
Right.
Look at the exclusions and there's an exclusion for, you know, acts of an elected official that are a crime. So here we have an elected official who is charged with the crime. We need somebody who can really analyze that and see if, you know, under the circumstances, if there's a way to get around that. And I, and I think Mick would definitely be up to the task, him and his associates.
Okay, yeah. So that was one of the discussions and, and at this point, you know, if Mr. Crosby wants to leave or not, what I was going to do is I was going to ask all just all these, okay, I'll take much of the.
They do charge a, a princely fee, you know?
Well, that, he, he would negotiate with us on that and he said he's willing to talk to us regarding that and there may be a post outcome compensation formula that he would utilize.
There's a reason he listens to Tucson Country Club.
Yeah, I know, he's got a great office too.
On Skyline.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lots of, lots of den animals on the, oh, so he's not.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. He's a big hunter.
He's a big hunter.
Right.
So.
Crosby's leaving at 13:15.
All right.
All right, Tom.
See you later. So. Yeah, he'll, we'll send somebody, go get him.
We have a quorum.
We still have a quorum.
Yeah.
We're still, so, so Kathleen, this, this is generally as an elected official, this is for us too, by the way.
Yes, I know.
If we were to be prosecuted for something that I believe we did as part of our duty and we were doing in good faith and the intent was to represent the constituencies that elected us and you're trying to do what your voters want to do, could you be persecuted by, for example, the attorney general for violating a, a statute that at the time you interpret not to apply or you interpret not to be relevant here? And do you have to spend your fortune of resources? For example, the case with Ms. Judd, who, you know, I, I could probably afford it, Mr. Crosby, I think, probably afford, although it does kick you financially in the teeth. Ms. Judd clearly couldn't and she ended up losing her house over it, having to sell her house and everything where she thought she was doing what was best for her constituents. She heard from a lot of voters that they wanted her to do a deep dive and look at what happened in that election before approving the canvas or redoing the canvas and all that stuff. So she was basically trying to support the will of, of the people that elected her and in the process, she ends up, ends up getting prosecuted for it.
Well, you know, when I was looking at running for this position and saw this happening and looked at the details, I definitely questions how the whole thing actually is set up that they ended up having to be prosecuted or indicted for what they did. I'll tell you one thing, this past election, I would not, if I was a sitting Board of Supervisors, I would not have certified it.
Can we have a point of order?
Sure.
Get the name and the address of the person.
Oh, Allison. Hey darling.
Oh, yeah, she's attending.
Yeah.
All right.
So I, you know, had to sit there and I made a joke that no matter what, I'd probably end up going to jail for my constituents. Now, that was a joke. But when I think what they were doing was definitely within the statute of what their role was and the whole issue of the timing and stuff is really questionable, but then when Mr. McIntyre turned and testified against them, that leaves a real question of whether you can trust the Cochise County Attorney's Office to actually really guide you or to give you advice because if you can just turn on me, I, I, I don't understand that because he represented them, didn't he?
And, and, and if I, and I could add it again, I've had this discussion with Mr. Kreia. The reason they call it an opinion and whether a judge issues it or an attorney issues it because it's that, it's an opinion, there are different differences of opinion and just because, and what my heartburn is with what happened with the insurance company after speaking with them when we were up at the orientation, what they told me that, that they had been approached by the county attorney's office who said that we advised them not to do this and they did it anyway, that's why the insurance company did not cover them. So my concern with that is just because one guy makes that opinion, you know, why is that the opinion, right? Why can't we go get a second opinion or even a third opinion? So that, that's the other piece of this, it's no offense, but it's, you know, you're just one guy and then by definition, then if you're in a courtroom, you have a plaintiff, you have a defendant and you have a judge, one of those three are wrong technically, all right? So every time, every time, and maybe two of them are wrong if you get overturned and it goes, gets overturned on appeal. So what I'm getting at is I don't like the fact that there's one attorney's opinion and that's the one that gets bludgeoned over the head of anybody, whether it's myself and Ms. Gomez or Mr. Crosby or even Ms. Judd. That's, that's the heartburn and that's what happened in this case. The opinion of one, one attorney who was then translated to the attorney general and the grand jury and of course, the insurance company is what set this chain of events in motion and that's the heartburn. And I, I would like to remedy that and I would like to set a precedent so that if this occurs again, we have the ability to get multiple opinions and that the attorney's one opinion of the, whether it's you as the board attorney or somebody else, isn't the one that is used to beat us over the head because we decided to go against your opinion and go with another opinion.
Yeah, I, I understand that. So what I endeavor to do is give a conservative reading of the statutes, right? The law. This is what it says in black and white. Here are the cases that are interpreted. This is what we know for sure. This is the thing that a judge is most likely going to find, in my opinion.
In your opinion, yeah.
Right? I, I will probably shy away from something that is super creative or isn't supported by any case law, but there may be another attorney that is willing to take that adventure and, you know, you could get that opinion too. So in cases where we have an issue, the, the county has an issue and I'm advising you, that's going to be where I start and probably where I stop. Like this is the statute, you guys want to do something different. I don't see anything in the statute that supports it. So I, I can't advise you to do that. And we may disagree. At that point, if you want to hire like another attorney to take a second look at that, I think that is absolutely a valid practice for this county and perhaps that would give you then some cover when ASAP comes, you know, and says, we're not going to ensure this because you're going against the advice of your counsel. So that's something we could build into kind of our process for negotiating these things. And I hope that, you know, they rarely happen because mostly we're just about.
I think this is a unique scenario that occurred here that probably has not occurred before, but you can't not say that it isn't a very defining and, and I would say chilling effect on the Board of Supervisors now because you have to walk on egg trails now because you got an AG that, you know, wants to come down and, you know, pound us over the head and insert herself into everything, you know, and she is, she is, you know, I'm sure everybody's watching, she has declared legal war on Cochise County and she's not just the stuff that she's doing to the Board of Supervisors. I mean, she's threatening to sue the dairy for, under nuisance law, you know, she's going after other, other business entities within Cochise, threatening to go after other entities within Cochise County. So there is clearly a political adversarial relationship here at play and anybody that doesn't believe one minute that you have a, a Democrat attorney general beating the crap out of two Republican supervisors and then going after private industry isn't a political component is dreaming, right? This is black and white, everybody could see it.
So I, I'm not blind, but I, I don't do politics, I'm not.
No, I know you don't do politics, but we do.
But you do.
And that, and that's the point we're trying to make here that, that we do not want to go bankrupt because of a political difference within attorney general, whomever, a superior court or appellate court or superior court judge, whoever it may be, because we have a, a political difference of opinion, I don't want to be bankrupted and deny my kids their inheritance or, or whatever because I, I took a political stand on an issue.
Absolutely.
And, and this, this is, there are several questions here that maybe this case can answer, right? That's the other thing you get when you go after people in court is you get an opinion from a judge and in some cases it goes all the way to the Supreme Court and Supreme Court lays a decision down. And I know Mr. Crosby just went up there to appeal the legislative immunity factor regarding his case and I think, I cannot believe the appellate court did not think he had legislative immunity because we are political subdivisions of the state and he was acting in his official capacity at the time for what he thought. It wasn't like he went out and robbed a liquor store and got charged with a felony and was being prosecuted for robbing a liquor store. He's being prosecuted because he thought he was doing what his constituents and what he thought was best for the, the people that elected. Same thing with Ms. Judd, right? So she, she basically got dragged down that, that road, although she claims she's made her peace with the attorney general, she's a bigger person than I am because I would never make my peace if somebody tried to, if they took my home from me, basically.
And I also think that this is, there's a real question here because in the statutory says, you know, shall, right? Instead of may. So there you got one word that lawyers can sit there and say, well, you know, you, you can't necessarily, you needed to certify, but you had to do it here and there. I mean, the question of who has the authority to me to do this, in my mind, is very set, but other people have interpreted differently. And so that's the key. I mean, it, maybe like you said, these are things that be taken to the court to, to actually, let's look at the word shall versus may or two totally.
Well, I mean, there's other things, like the definition of canvas.
Right.
What does canvas mean?
Exactly.
Does canvas mean approve the election? Does canvas mean review the election? Right? Because if you read it, it says you can make adjustments, you could, you could, you know, go through certain, certain procedures to determine whether a vote is valid or not, whether, you can make changes during the canvas, right? So, you know, that's.
You worked in the legislature and I've worked in the law and we both know that statutes sometimes are.
That's why we got judges.
Wanting some clarity, right?
Yeah, that's, yeah. And, and, and again, I also understood the concept of legislative intent, right? And a lot of times that's ignored by the court sometimes and I've, I've had my battles with the Supreme Court on certain cases because I'm sitting there, I'm the guy that wrote the law, I'm getting sued and you're, you're denying me to tell you in court what my intent was, right? This is the legislative intent of the bill and they would say, no, that's not relevant to this case. Strictly.
I worked on Hill and I wrote federal legislation. So these words and in the shall and may is.
Legal terms, yeah.
Legal terms, it can be interpreted however the political force that's in power decides to interpret them. That's just the political side of it, not the legal side of it. So as political elected officials, these are things that we have to deal with and when I see this, then you can get indicted and lose, you know, I may lose your house, have what, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars legal speed and when you are believed that you are doing the right thing and not to get a second opinion, this doesn't make any sense.
Yeah.
So.
Well, again, I'm, I'm just, I just have heartburn with the way the whole process went down, right? We have executive session, we have attorney-client privilege and then somehow because someone claims, and this is, you know, more for the county attorney, that piece in the statute that says that the attorney general has legal supervisory, or what, what's the term? Where she has the authority to oversee the, the.
The county attorneys.
The county attorneys, right? The legal, the legal shit, that, that's what McIntyre was claiming. If you read his comments that he wrote to the bar of why he disclosed attorney-client privilege is because he said, I follow also under the attorney general and under the advisory of her, she made this recommendation that I, I testify in the grand jury, you know? And that is a problem as well that I think needs to be remedied because I don't think you answer to the attorney general. I think you answer the voters, that's my opinion.
That's my opinion too.
Okay, good. So, so, so I don't think you should have to have a mother may I because it's your rear end on the chopping block as well. So that provision though is a startling provision for, for me as, as a member of the county government and as you as well, member of the county government, because you can now have an outside entity basically second guessing and.
No, I don't think I report to the attorney general.
No, but she, what's the language? It's legal.
We're separate elected officials.
Correct, but there's a provision in the constitution that says she has her, and her duties and defines her duties in the constitution. In there, it says that she has supervised, legal supervisory oversight over the county attorneys or something along those lines, it says.
Yeah, I can quote it to you, but.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm not quoting it verbatim, but it's in there. Under her, under her role and duties as an attorney general. So, so I mean, that, that to me is, is a unique thing that I think is a problem as well, because I don't think you should have, your, your supervisors are the voters, just like our supervisors.
I completely agree.
That's who we answer to, we, we answer the voters. So I think that's the way it should be. And that, again, gets back to Ms. Judd and Mr. Crosby's scenario, they were thinking they were answering to the voters, right? So that's the, that's the crux of that. So bringing Mr. Rusing in to look at it, I'm not hiring him to file a lawsuit or go out. He, he says that he is willing to do the research, examine the facts and determine whether or not we have something to go forward on with whatever.
So I, I would say, so his role properly would be coverage counsel, you know, is this covered or not? And then if not, or, or he thinks that it ought to be, then to assess it as an insurance bad faith claim.
Whatever he, you know, you could even be, I don't mind you being involved in this at all.
Yeah.
But, but, you know, that, that would be the discussion here, so.
Yeah, again, I, there's no reason in this, this particular matter for a conflict, there's not disharmony on this.
Well, I didn't, I didn't, I had to phrase it that way so that we could, we could.
Doesn't this just help us going forward in establishing kind of precedence? Because it just seems like the fact that if this was in this, in this, any case ever to happen again, at least it would be established that it's okay to go get a second opinion. I mean, doesn't it just help us in where we go forward?
Yeah, but again, I'm worried about the chilling effect.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm elected to make decisions on behalf of roughly 45,000 people, right? So if, if, a hundred twenty-five some thousand as a whole for the three of us, right? So if we have this sword of Damocles hanging over our head that if we make the wrong decision, we could be bankrupted and we could be dragged through the coals of the media and, and, you know, vilified and all this stuff because we made a decision, even if we make, what if, what if we just make a wrong decision? And they're saying, well, you made the wrong decision. Well, now you're going to go to jail or we're going to prosecute you and you're going to be removed from office.
And how does that impact other people willing to, to run for this office? They're like, well, I'm not going to run for that office, I don't know what happened.
So let's, as a, as a, a what if scenario, which I hate doing what if scenarios, but what if, what if in the 2026 election, you know, something happens and we see an anomaly that just doesn't look right? And we're like, look at this, we did, we did a hand count and it didn't match the machines or we, we know how many ballots we had, but the machines counted this many votes and, you know, we don't know what the problem is. So what if we decide to take a week to try to figure out what that is and we miss the deadline to submit?
I think 2024 is a good example.
Right.
All the things that happened during that.
Right.
That was a perfect storm of any, everything that could go wrong except maybe a snowstorm that kept the city, the county, you know, from going to work for five days. I mean, there were so.
I'm talking about if we see an anomaly. I'm saying, what if we think, you know, so we've canvassed, we meet and we're going through the, the results and, and we have the elections director there and she's saying, well, we, we had the machine made a mistake, we think there was a software problem or we think this was wrong or it triple counted the ballots or we don't know. I'm just saying just an example. We say, well, we, let's take a pause and we're going to have a discussion on how we want to remedy this. And all of a sudden the deadline comes up again and says, this is the date that you, you don't approve the canvas, you know, and boom, we have, now we got the Attorney General filing interference with an elected, uh, official.
Well, ideally you're working with Secretary of State to iron those things out. Um, but I understand what you're saying. Suppose it was something where what you want to do seems to be contradicting what's the black and white letter of the statute.
Well, I mean, the black and white letter of the statute, because that's the whole thing that got the two of them in this mess is the interpretation of the definition of canvas.
Okay, so let's say it's that.
Right.
You're reading the statute one way.
Right.
Secretary of State is saying, no, we don't see it that way.
Right. It is a ministerial task that must be done.
And if you don't do this, you know, or you violate the election procedure management.
I'll give you an example about the, the recount, the hand count thing that the judge in Pima County said, right? He says a hundred percent recount is not, uh, uh, random. So you can't do a hundred percent, a hundred percent hand count because that's not a random count because the statute says random.
So in those instances.
That's what he said.
You're saying, you know, there ought to be.
There's still.
Different consequence than what happened in this instance.
Yeah, I mean, this, these little getcha, you know, we all watch these things on TV. You know, I used to watch, uh, what was that one law, law, law show with the kid that had like the photographic memory that, that didn't take the bar exam or something that, that, uh.
How did it?
Seuss. That, that's so, and they, that show, they do all the legal jujitsu. They find that little technicality, that little thing, and then they hang people out to dry over that little technicality. Well, you know, that's great, but that's Hollywood. This is life, people's lives. I mean, Ms. Judd's life was, was basically, uh, taken away from her in all regards. She, her, her husband passed away, but that wasn't directly related to this, but she suffered her husband passing away, she suffered having to sell her house to pay her legal bills, she moved in with her mother and she has basically very little to live on retirement wise now because she's paying, she's still paying legal bills, you know? So this is all because she thought she was listening to the people that elected her. I mean, that's her crime. Her crime is she, she was a, a, a nice lady and everybody that knows her will tell you she's the sweetest lady on God's green earth. She, she doesn't want to make anybody mad. She just, she wants, you know, and then she generally felt that she was trying to listen to people and then, you know, she, she basically got, she was used, in my opinion, which I can say too, as a political pawn to show how tough I am or how I'm going to go after these election deniers or after the J sixers or whomever. That whole, whole story there is that was all political and everybody in the country saw that. And we saw that because that's what translated in November. They're tired of it. They're tired of the lawfare and that's what we had here. We had lawfare and there's got to be some way to protect. And I saw Representative Jones or now Ketsel, Ketsel, uh, she's trying to run a bill, but she got pressured, she had to amend it to, to go into effect in 2026, which doesn't help Ms. Judd or Mr. Crosby. But, uh, she basically says, as long as you're, you know, executing your daughter, your, your, your duties as you swear, you know, faithfully, you know, and you're trying to do what you believe is the best within what you think is legal at the time and you're trying to respect your constituents, you shouldn't be held, uh, on the hook personally for it. I mean, every other case, when counties get sued or people get sued, you know, generally that's, you know, they have, what, what's the term? Uh, qualified immunity, right? From the government, the government provides protection. You know, police officers get it, uh, government officials get it for making decisions, legislators have it when they make decisions.
Sure.
And they could say things, which is really funny, I can defame someone on the floor of the state senate and you can't come after me.
That's absolute immunity. So.
So.
With the, you know, qualified immunity generally applies when people are, uh, when the law is not clear and section 1983 claims against police officers and unless the law has been clearly established that for instance, a chokehold violates.
No, I got, I, I got.
Yeah, and, and that's what you're, I think, suggesting.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying here.
It ought to be the same if you're sort of doing your best in your understanding of the law and it's not clear that you're violating it, then why shouldn't there be qualified immunity? I think that's an interesting question.
I would just like Mr. Rusing and yourself, if you're willing to work with him on it.
I'd love to work with Mick again.
Yeah, to take a look at it and determine if we have legal grounds to go forward.
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll come back in here and we'll make a decision on whether or not we want to, we want to pursue or not pursue. Maybe we can't, maybe he comes back, maybe you guys say, look, this is probably not going to happen. We looked at it, you know, there's this precedent, that case, this case, and the odds are you're not going to make it and then we'll have to decide whether we want to do it or not.
Mick's a great litigator.
But we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to decide that time after we get input, but he needs to be able to go do the homework and he doesn't work for free. You know, that's just the reality.
No, he doesn't. Um, Chairman, I heard you also mentioned, uh, an interest in suing Brian McIntyre. That was a separate thing, right?
For malpractice, yeah.
For malpractice.
Yeah.
Okay, so in that instance, our office would be conflicted, right? He, um, uh, is a prior to employer action to current employee of the office. Um, and so there is an ethical rule that would specifically prohibit us then from being engaged in a lawsuit against him. For that, we would need.
Okay, I, I kind of figured that was the reason.
We would have to be kept out of it.
Well, that was the reason that I, uh, you know, I was saying we were conflicted or whatever. So, okay.
Okay.
And then the one that, the other one we were going to talk about was what Ms. Gomez brought up. I really don't like the way the open meeting law is being interpreted either.
Do we need Mr. Crosby back for that?
Oh yeah, you want to bring him back? Oh wait, we got to, wait, we got to, wait, do we vote with or without him?
Because we have a quorum, right? Do we need to vote?
Uh, you guys can bring him back in, you can vote with or without him. He needs to like abstain probably because he's got.
To hire Mick Rusing to assist in the, what did you call it, Paul?
So he, Mick Rusing, I can write, write you, you know, I think, but it's, we would hire Mick Rusing to do coverage analysis, um, as regards to their denial of coverage for Mr. Crosby. Um, and we would ask him to assess the viability of an insurance bad faith claim.
For both of them, Judd and Crosby, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so that's, that's for Mick.
Okay.
And then, and then the, so again, talking to Mick, when I talked to him about the McIntyre piece, it's a critical component of the overall case to make that argument. Okay, so, and I think ACIP will also like that as well because then they can hide behind that on their side as well. So who handles that? Do we, do we hire, I, I'd like to hire Mick as well because he's, he's proven himself as a.
There's no reason he couldn't do all.
Yeah, do the legal malpractice analysis to determine whether or not there was legal malpractice and it makes a case there. So.
All right, so I, so generally speaking, uh, you would hire the firm of Rusing Lopez and Lizardi to, um, assess claims against ACIP and Brian McIntyre.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's the motion?
Do I bring him in or not?
He's not here.
Do we have a motion?
He's not here?
Me.
Oh, he's not here. Okay, Mr. Crosby is absent then. All right, so, um, so the motion would be that the board, uh, will hire Mr. Rusing and Associates to provide us legal advice and make a determination if we have a claim, is that correct? Against ACIP and then also to investigate if we have a claim, uh, against Mr. McIntyre. So I'll, I just made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so we have a second, so all those, any discussion? Do you want to?
Well, no, I mean, I hadn't thought about the Brian McIntyre thing, but I think it's worth pursuing, just to find out.
There's, there's, there's a, uh, from what I was explained, again, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm trying to regurgitate from memory what I understand, there are several arguments to be made that there's this triangular effect that occurred and ACIP will argue that they were acting on good faith from the advice that they received. So you have to show that they received.
Bad advice.
Bad or improper or something advice, um, they will probably want to see that well. So that's what I was explaining. There was, there's a, there's a, a pattern here that will help, help make it better.
Okay.
Of, of a case.
Now I understand why.
There may or may not be.
Right, well, we'll find out.
Depending on what Mr. Rusing does from his research, but I mean, that's the, that's the thing.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, motion on the floor, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Mr. Crosby is absent, so two zero with one absent. All right, so then we can talk about the next one.
Well, I won't, I won't caution you on that.
Okay.
I'm looking at the agenda, I've looked at it a couple of times and I don't see anything about open meeting law, but I wouldn't.
Yeah, but that was part of the.
Litigation, future litigation.
Yeah, future litigations, you know, and stuff, and it may or may not be a conflict.
Oh, got it. Right.
Oh, look at the cat dragged in. Mr. Crosby is now present. So, so do you, do you think that would cover? If not, we could schedule it again if.
So as I understand you, you're interested in litigation related to the open meeting law potentially, correct?
Right, there, there are some provisions of the law which, again, I believe are, the, the law is probably written the way the intent was, which was to prevent conducting business outside the public view. What it, what I am saying is that it is being abused and needs to be tightened up either through a court decision or through legislative repair.
Okay.
So.
Got those.
This is, this is again, this is again why I, I, this I wanted to have an executive session because there's legal strategy here that I'm now going to disclose.
Well, if you want to go, I would, I would say at this point, I, I'll agree to go into, okay, this is what I feel, that I understand why we have to go.
It's ironic that we're going to go to an executive session to discuss open meeting law.
But I think, it is, but I think that this is such a, a situation where, you know, I mean, I really feel that I can't do my job because of open meeting law, because of the way it's being interpreted, where I can't talk about, well, sure, I'm not going to, I understand the difference, but there are things that happen in doing as an elected official, trying to create good policy or trying to react to things that people are saying that we have done, where I can't somehow even talk to these gentlemen about things, like, you know, whether it's the sheriff and what's going on. How do we get our message across of what our real intention is? It's impossible.
See, that, that's an excellent point. So here's, here's where I'm going to echo what, what Ms. Gomez is saying. There are political discussions that we need to have.
That's it.
Three of us that are not related to a public vote or a public policy that we will enact. So I could understand not meeting in secret to discuss a public policy, then come in and just rubber stamp a vote. That's what the open meeting law was designed to present. But for example, we are, our, our political strategy with dealing, for example, with the letter that the sheriff circulated with the mayors, I can't talk to these three guys and say, hey, let's formulate a response to the sheriff. We're not going to vote on nothing, but I want to say, hey, Tom, what do you think? We should issue another letter? Should we do a press release or Kathleen, do you want to, we want to write a letter? Do you want to go on the media together or whatever? That's an open meeting law violation right now.
Right, and, and so the mayor calls me and says, what do you think about this? What is the board? And so here, I have to speak independently, but I don't feel comfortable because I haven't had a discussion with these gentlemen because in, or either address as a board and going out independently goes against, maybe I might say something that not having a conversation with them, I realize is a wrong thing to say and I jeopardize and maybe I could get indicted. I mean, do you understand, having seen what's happened in the past, now he's intervening and Attorney General is looking at us and then after the letter that you sent me, after we made our decision to hire, I feel like my gosh, I mean, I really, I'm so frustrated and just angry because I have a right to defend my decision as well as defend the board's decision on these kind of political things because it's allowed the sheriff to go, he's not restrained whatsoever to do whatever he feels he needs to do to get his point across. Even when he's saying things that are not what we feel and to not even meet with us, he's assuming, a lot of assumptions being made and then that's very impossible as a political elected official to try to deal when once the, the perception is out there, it's almost impossible to change the perception to what I feel would be the truth. So, did I state that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's, it's, they're, they're, and then there's other political strategies.
That's right.
Say there's an election coming up, right? And the three of us are all together, we want to run as a team, like I used to do in the legislature when I was state senator, I had two state reps, we ran, we ran as a tight little team. Now, we're in separate districts all together, but, you know, having that sort of sense of camaraderie where you have a united board and we're running for reelection together, we can't do that.
And the way it's being interpreted.
But I believe that we can though, that's my point. My point is the open meeting law, I believe, says that we can do that. What I'm saying is that it is so over enforced that it, the creep, the scope creep of that interpretation of that statute has gotten to the point now where we, we face legal affinities because we just happen to, you know, meet together and talk together about something that is not even relevant to the policy actions that we make on the days.
After we made a decision in a vote and then to say, okay, I'm going to give an example, uh, I was later told and when we did that planning and zoning vote, that actually planning and zoning wanted the gentleman to take the approach we did, but they went and asked us to prove on the one that everyone was contentious about. So I wanted to ask you, do you know, realize that, that planning and zoning really wanted us to come to the decision we did, but we had to take 45 minutes because they didn't bring us that decision? So I want to talk to them about it and I can't because I'm going to violate the open meetings law because supposedly I can't even say, hey Frank, don't, don't worry if it takes an hour to decide this, I think we should do it. That's a violation of open meeting law?
Or how about this? This was the other one that I, uh, got warned about, right? So if we go and talk to that guy.
Yeah.
The zoning guy and I, and, and he says, well, I talked to Ms. Gomez and she said, whoa, I got it, I go, you can't tell me what Ms. Gomez said because that's an open meeting, that's a serial meeting, right? So he's like, oh, oh, okay, okay. So it's not just us that's in, in the hot seat here. One of our, our wonderful people here that work for us, you know, like Ms. Gilman is probably the worst, she's probably the one that most at risk, right?
Right.
Because she talks to all three of us and it would have, now, she's got to be so careful that she doesn't say anything that you say to her and I say to her.
So then what can you say? Is what I would ask you because you can't say anything that you said. I try not to. So, so if I, so I'm sitting here thinking on our decision, we should have done a press release. How can we possibly do that?
Yeah.
Without any conversation.
Yeah, and then that discussion, that press release is, is subject to scrutiny, public scrutiny, because it has to be done in an open meeting. So we would have to, we would have to have deep political discussion that may be ugly because politics is an ugly business. And so you may have ugly political discussions that you, whether we don't want shared or maybe we're going to say things about somebody else that they don't want shared in that discussion, right? So we can't have that discussion between the three of us. We have to have a public meeting, it's got to be on TV for everybody to see.
And we're like-minded, right? So if we come to a quick decision in a, in a, at a vote that happened in an executive session and then people are going to say, oh, wow, hey, they came to a quick decision. came to a quick decision. How could they come to a quick decision? They must have spoken to each other before that quick decision.
And I saw Aunt Tenori at Domino's picking up a pizza, and he was talking to Gomez as she was walking out the door.
They must have said.
They must have said something to Joe.
So then how do we ever implement any change if you think good for the constituents of this county, when we're told, we have, we, you know, oh, just don't say hello to them. Then nobody will say, you know, then you can't, you know, you can't be accused of open violating the open meeting laws. I mean, it's ridiculous. And I don't know. Maybe in a sense, what if we decided we wanted to go and propose legislation to the state that says, when you have a quorum of three, it is impossible, or we need more clarification, or we need exclusion when it comes to political strategy or discussion, or ways in which you can respond when you are being accused of doing something? Maybe we have to go to them and say, you can't, on a three quorum, this is pretty impossible to even govern.
Right.
You know, five is a different thing. City councils are different. They're usually, you know, seven, right? It's different. But a three member quorum, you basically become a rubber stamp.
Two member.
Two. So you become a rubber stamp if you start to be fearful of your job.
Right. And that that's that's the other thing where, again, when I mentioned it to you, it's the First Amendment issue, because it stifles our free speech, particularly our political speech, which is definitely protected by the First Amendment. And it's a Fourteenth Amendment equal protection issue, because as a board of three, we are different than a board of five or a board of seven. They can actually go to lunch together. There was, if there was a five of us, we're elected officials right here.
We'd get off air off.
Two, yeah, two of us can go off to lunch together, and we don't violate the law. Whereas if I go to lunch with Ms. Gomez, I just filed, I got a quorum. Oh, just like we were on the call this morning, right? The call call this morning, but it was noticed. Oh, that's right. It was, was it, or was it yesterday, where they said, oh, beware, we have a quorum of the board supervisors, Mr. Crosby and Mr. Antoni?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. They warned everybody in the meeting that careful.
Where was I? How come I wasn't involved? See, I mean, there are things that are going to happen, and you can't involve me, because whatever reason, right? Or I feel like, you know, what are these guys doing? And, you know, maybe I should know what they're doing.
Yeah, well, if she wants to call and say, hey, I heard you and Tom had a meeting with the nine one one emergency guys yesterday.
Right, right.
What did you guys talk about?
Can't tell you.
Can't tell you? This is an open meeting law violation. And that deprives her of that knowledge. That's the point we're trying to make. I mean, so.
I hear what you're saying. And for a three person forum, it is cumbersome, because any two of you, if you talk about what is potentially an action, then you've violated the open meeting law. So what is it that you are interested in doing?
So this is where I, I guess I'll just say.
If you want to go into.
So part of the strategy is this.
Well, you know what? Why don't we go into executive session, Frank? See?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be okay with that, because I think the public understands the frustration of why we feel this way.
All right. So I guess I should read the statement then?
Sure.
Sent to ARS thirty eight four twenty one dot oh three, and the board may go in executive session for legal advice with the attorney of the public body to consider its position and instruct attorneys regarding the public body's position in pending litigation. So at this time, I would like a motion to go in executive session.
I move to go into executive session.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, aye.
And and by that, Alice, I didn't invite you here, but I've known you for a long time. So.
We're going to need you to step up.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we're going.
For the need of you to see me a long time.
And we're good. All right. So we are no longer in executive session. So we're back in regular session here. So, Mr. Crey, did you want to talk about this memo?
Yes. First, I just wanted to, because we've been asked, put on the record that when we went into executive session, I'm sorry, we just.
Alice, no more asking more.
Alice left the room, so it was only everybody except for her that was that was here.
Right. So it was, just to be clear, it was all three supervisors. We had Mr. Crey as our board member, Laura, the clerk of the board, Miss Duko, the county attorney, Jo, Joe, and then Ms. Gilman. And sorry, I.
No, we don't have to say names.
I'm terrible with names. So that's who was actually in the executive session.
All right. Just real quick, today, I've sent you and the county administrator a document called Scope of Representation. The Arizona Supreme Court has added some new notes to its ethical rules, and it was suggested that we do this. All of the counties are sending something similar to all of their departments. I will send it to all the directors and the electeds. And it spells out, in, I think, bullet point on the second page, these points, what the role of the county attorney's office is, who the client is, our respective roles, limits to what we do and don't do. For example, we don't give individual employees advice about employment actions if they're having adverse action. Who makes decisions for the county, and what instances, and the ex of the attorney client privilege, as well as conflicts of interest, and what to do in those cases. And I won't go into it in depth if you guys have questions after you review it, because it's it's a little bit long. You can contact me directly. And if you want to have work session, happy to do that. So that's it.
Okay, we'll read it over.
Yeah.
And again, this is the Supreme Court putting out the rules. And this applies to all attorneys in the state?
It applies.
All government attorneys?
Yeah, all government attorneys. And that's what the tweaks to the role were specifically towards government attorneys. Our role, you know, can be a little bit weird, because we represent the county as an entity.
And all the individual.
The board represents the county as.
Moes, Moes?
Row.
Rose, row officers.
And the and the constitutional officers and the departments and all of that.
Yeah.
So people sometimes have the wrong expectation about what our role is, and it has to be explained. Between us, the board of supervisors makes policy. You are the decision makers, right? Our role, Chief Civil's role, is just to tell you, this is the law, the way we read it. But what you guys choose to do, obviously, that's not in my wheelhouse. So I hope that's clear for now.
So like, when do things become? Okay, explain to me the attorney client privilege. So you're my attorney, and and.
No, no, no.
No.
He's the attorney for the board.
For the board. Okay.
And it's even worse than that, Tom. I'm the attorney for the county. So when Chairman Antoni was working at Raytheon, still isn't, negotiating a contract, he wasn't represented by the attorney. He was representing Raytheon, and he's acting as its representative. So in the same way, you three as a board act as representatives for a political and corporate entity called Cochise County.
We're representing the county.
Right. So I'm trying to give my best advice to you as representatives of the county.
So for instance, if you sent us something, and and we would have to all agree on whether or not that letter would be made public.
That's right. That's one of the implications.
The whole majority of two would have to agree?
Yeah, two.
And then how do we agree? How do we meet to agree? We can't do it through email, right?
It would be a public action, right?
Yeah, we'd have to have a meeting.
We'd have to have a meeting.
Right.
So I would.
Just like even county just did.
Is, as well. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Steve Christie trying to get.
Right.
Letter from the.
Oh, right.
County attorney released to the public.
So he just put it on the agenda.
Right.
So he put it on the agenda.
Right.
And then that's what was enabled. And then you could vote.
Then you vote.
Okay, okay.
So anyways, all right. Yeah, like I said, if you have questions, call me or email me. And if you want to have a word session, go into anything in depth, let's do that.
So any questions that we may have, just tell Sharon? Or did I can email you?
Call me.
Okay. I'm, you know, kind of concerned about how I do this.
Right.
Okay.
You want to do.
So just asked you. All right.